Thank, thank you for coming. Happy Tuesday night. This is the November 12th meeting of the City Monroe City Council. Let the record reflect that all members of council are present, with the exception of Mr. Tyler Gregory. I need a motion of the approval of the agenda, please.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Ms. Malcolm to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sams. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries. That passes. The consent agenda this month is council minutes and executive session minutes from October, planning commission, historic preservation, downtown development, convention and visitors bureau from September. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
Motion.
A motion by Ms. Crawford to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries. That passes. I don't have any public presentations for tonight. In public comments, we did have one person that signed and then chose not to. We move straight into business items. Mr. Probst, city administrator update?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. As you know, the referendum for retail package in the city passed earlier this month. And as such, we'll be writing the rules for a subsequent ordinance that will allow you to basically set all the rules and parameters around what it means to issue a license for said retail package establishment. That could be anything from how many licenses, one, two, three, so on and so forth per population. It can mean square footage, inventory levels, location, distance requirements, so on and so forth. And we'll have that probably sometime in the first quarter for you to pick up. We recently had the budget meeting for the FY 2025 annual budget. Appreciate everybody's participation there. Good series of meetings. Want to thank all the department heads and directors. We got through everything pretty well. And that will be before you next month. That's part of the regular meeting for adoption. And just want to continue. I know I've said it probably almost every month of the year thus far, but economic development is still absolutely booming in this community. That's a blessing. It's a great thing. We have a lot of great entrepreneurs who are still seeking this community. We'll probably see some on the agenda later tonight. And just, that's a testament to your dedication to make sure that we support all of our businesses. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Logan. Are there any questions for Mr. Probst? Hearing none, Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, sir. One quick comment I wanted to make on a, we always talk about tap grants that we have in the system. The tap grant that is for Lumpkin Highland and Broad Street to connect to North Broad goes to bid January of '25. So, that should, that should come in. Let's hope prices, everything come in good. And then we should see construction finally starting on that corridor to finish that north segment, spring of this coming year. Our taxiway, everything has been completed on the crack seal. We are waiting on the DOT to do a final inspection of that. And then essentially downtown, we're in the holiday season. Mentioned it last month where we are, we have started. So, the other night, light up the night, November 7th, we had about 1,000 additional people downtown during that event at that hour from the previous Thursday where we didn't have an event. So, pretty good participation there. Candlelight shopping, Santa and Pocket Park, carriage rides. We have a train this year that will mirror the same route that the carriage goes on. Will be this coming Thursday and then the next Thursday, so the 14th and the 21st. Be sure to check out social media. Our website has all the dates on it. November 21st is our annual Bike Strikes and Magical Lights Parade in Childers Park. And then that'll be the first night of that. And it will carry on until after Christmas each night. And then, of course, our Christmas parade, December 5th, where you can expect, what, 30,000 plus people in town for the period of a couple of hours. And then they'll, they'll go their ways. Fall Fest, October 12th, I said with cellphone data, we would top out at about 22,000. And data showed that we were at 21,800. So, but I would say math, figuring kids, whatnot, I would say we hit that 30,000 number. It'll be nice to one day, hopefully, actually see what those true numbers are. And then the other event, the Theater on the Green, October 25th, '26 was successful. We had somewhere around an average of about 550 people each of those two nights to watch our first theater performance. The, I believe it was what, the Almost True Tales of Robin Hood. And was there the first night. And it was a great show by actors all under the age of 18 put on, on stage. So, just a lot going on. Every Thursday, keep a watch out from here till Christmas. Downtown's booming. And I'll be glad to take any questions.
Are there any questions, Chris?
Mr. Bailey, on Saturday, November 2nd, you were talking about how we have all that traffic on Thursdays. It's 6,000 people here on the 2nd. And there was no specific event. So, folks are finding downtown.
We did start our market on November 2nd. Our winter market came back up for a winter season. So, I'd like to think that contributed just to...
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure it did. I was unaware of that. But I'm thinking that, I had, I had people call me that following Monday, asking what had happened because folks were everywhere. So, anyway, it's always nice to, to see the work that Sandy and Laura Beth and all of our various teams do in town. Moving to department reports. Mr. Croy, Central Services?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the visitor center exterior rehab is almost complete. We're about 95% complete on that project. It's kind of been a small delay waiting on the rear gutter downspouts on the back of that building to be fabricated. We're still expecting to see that project wrap up by the end of November. We have come to an agreement on some terms of a lease renewal for one of the cellular carriers that we have on the Wayne Street water tank. And hopefully that will be, that lease will be before y'all next month for your approval. And lastly, at the airport, October the 27th, ESP had their annual Fall Big Jump Festival, which is a fun, fully accessible, family friendly fall festival and fundraiser. They raised over $108,000 for their mission of helping people with disabilities and their families. Sandy, Brian Wilson, myself, and a couple of our parks guys were there that day to help. But honestly, it was amazing to watch ESP and their, their staff of, their staff and their volunteers work that day. And if you don't mind, I've got Bill and Ann Scott here, who are the owners of Skydive Monroe, who would like to come up and at least speak on that event.
Hey, Bill. Glad you're here.
Thank you for letting me speak. Yes, we did, with ESP, raised $108,500 for, for their organization. And with that, we had over 425 people. I thought there were a lot more than that, the way it was loaded up, for those of you that were there. And we had out of 61 of, they call them the campers, of 61 people that were registered to jump, that helped raise the money. We got 40 of them jumped before the weather moved in. So, they were very, very happy. And I want to thank the city for everything that they did, helping us with parking, getting everything put out there, some extra electric put on the one building, so everything could operate. So, I just want to say thank you very much for everything that you guys have done. City did a great job.
Thank you for so much you put into it, because it was an awesome event.
Do it again next year. It's going to be bigger.
How many, how many years have we done this now? It's 12 to 13?
12 years, I think. This is the, I think we started actually in 2017, the first year. Or maybe it was 2012. I've got the banner up in the hangar. And it was, I think we raised about $15,000 results. So, it has grown every year. And with the help of the city of what they do, it makes it a good thing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
And that's, yeah, that's all I have tonight, unless you have any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Croy? Thank you, Chris. Mr. Calendar, Code?
Mayor, I'm going to defer any comments tonight from the Code Office, because I'm going to take up a lot of the council's time here shortly. So, I'm just going to...
And we'll all have questions for that. So, okay, good. Mr. Wilson, Economic Development?
Deferred. All right. So, the RFP, we were planning on having that up November 1st. That was the goal. We've got some delays on that. We're still in review with it. Still hoping mid to late November. I think that's, that's still the, the target. But that was where we started at. So, that really changed a whole lot. That's just kind of staying on pace with what we originally expected. So, Facebook page has gone up, continues to grow. Had a couple of new space available posts put out last month. And then also started doing some job availability posts. And we'll continue to do that. I've talked to a few different businesses to see if they wanted us to post that sort of thing for them and help them out as far as bringing candidates in for those jobs. So, that may be something. We'll try and get more of those up there, too. And you might want to just pay attention to that if you got anybody that you know that's looking, especially for seasonal stuff. City and downtown business activity, downtown properties are fairly limited right now in terms of like restaurant, larger stuff. We've got some big things that are in the works right now. Milner-Acock is, is almost fully leased. National Bank Building has got a new owner pending. So, that's the big white one on the corner, if anybody doesn't know. I can't tell you what those are yet. But those are, those will be great. And I think everybody will be really excited to find out what they are. And then we got some small retail spaces that are off-broad. We've still got several office spaces that are downtown. But most of those are upstairs office spaces. So, those are a little bit tricky trying to get people to take those when they're not ADA accessible and that sort of thing. But those are still out there. And we'll get some more posts up for those here soon. And then new businesses, we had four licenses that were added and four that were taken off. Two of those were actually change of ownership. And then one of those was DDA coming in. One of those was DDA zone coming out. And that was it. And then lastly, Active Souls Running Company, I know you posted that the other day, John, but they just opened, of course, on Thursday. So, if you hadn't been by there to check them out, go check them out. That's the, they're not new officially this month, but they're new as far as being open. So, and that's all I got. If anybody has any questions.
Are there any questions for Brian? Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, Finance?
Thank you, Mayor. You have before you the finance report as of September. Nothing major this month. All revenues and expenses are either below budget or trending at budget as of September. We did start receiving property tax collections in the month of October that are due November 15th. As Logan mentioned earlier, thank you all for being in attendance at the 2025 public hearing that we had for the, for the 2025 budget. And I want to thank all the directors this year. We had a very seamless budget process this year. And I talk it up to all of us working together, working hand in hand, and knowing what our needs are ahead of time, and trying to make sure that all of those were met. So, thank you to each of y'all for making that seamless and making it an easy process this year. So, you will have that before you next month for adoption.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Any questions for Beth?
I'm going to echo what you said. I know you all have been working on putting things together for that meeting last week for months. But to be able to walk in and out in just, you know, six hours was great. A meeting that goes two hours ahead of schedule is pretty good. Moving to Chief Dykes, Fire?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have our September incident data in your packet before you. And I guess the biggest thing I would add on that is that that was the busiest September to date so far in the past five-year period. So, as we continue to grow, so does our call volume. A couple of things going on with the department. Happy to say we are now back to having all full-time positions staffed with the addition of Bryce Turner this past month. So, that is, that is definitely good. And as we close out the year, we're starting to finish up on a couple of our capital projects for the year. First of all, we've got our, our MDTs, which are our mobile data terminals are in. So, that's allowing us to get information from the 911 Center in real time. Still working on some, a few bugs with Motorola, but those should be up and running effectively in the next week or two. And then lastly, we've had a significant amount of work done at our training center, where our burned building has been sanded, primed, and painted. And it looks great. So, not only does it improve the aesthetics, but also now all the bare metal has been primed, painted, and will last for a long time. And as much as I'd like to say, Mr. Mayor, that it's, it's red and gray, not red and black, but it is a very dark gray.
How did you know I was going to say that?
I'm sure you will appreciate it if you see it. But happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief? I don't either. Thank you. Chief Watts?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a total of, with our officers, we had a total of 9,877 area checks. We had calls for service, 2,148. Our officers conducted 607 traffic stops. And we made a total of 98 arrests. And we recovered eight guns off the streets. And back on the 19th October, we did our first ever SWAT trot. And we actually had 153 runners participate in that. We had our own, very own Julie Sams and David Dixon. And David actually won the Grandmaster 5K winner for his age bracket. So, that was good.
There wasn't a lot of competition.
Hey, take what you get, right?
I'll take it.
But we, we actually raised a total of $7,393 that will be given to the shop with a cop this coming December, that we can help less fortunate families in our community. And that, other than that, I'll take any questions if you should have any.
Any questions for Chief Watts? I did hear that you spoke yesterday, the Veterans Program at George Walton. I had heard you were very, very good.
They...
Thank you.
They're good at what.
For your service. And for those of you who served in any division of the Armed Forces, thank you for your service as well. Danny Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Mattress update, we collected 96. At the curve, the month of September, we billed out 60 at $900. So, we still trying to catch them up. Tunnish reports, our transfer station tonnage, we, we're still down 33% compared to 2022 in September. Our City Monroe tonnage report, our quarterly report, our diversion rate is 11%. Our goal is 25%. And the only other thing I have is Thanksgiving holiday collection and transfer station holiday schedule. Monday, November 25th would be Monday collection route, Tuesday, November 26th. Tuesday and Wednesday, customers will be picked up. On Wednesday, November 27th, Thursday, customers will be picked up. There will be no collection on Thursday, November 28th, and Friday, November 29th. And we may have a skeleton crew just to cover some missed pickups. Transfer stations, holiday schedule is full, we're full schedule except for Thursday, November 28th. And we're open from 5:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. I take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions for Danny? Hearing none, Mr. Still?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unless you have some questions about the report in front of you from September, I'll highlight a couple of things that's going on. Within the next week, we will be completely done with the 2024 L-MIG. We've got about two days of patching to do on Marable Street. We've had some trouble getting some asphalt. The last couple of times, we've tried to finish that up. And the striping contract will be done hopefully tomorrow. If not tomorrow, then Wednesday, Thursday. Our guys have been in the park. I'm sure you've seen the lights up. By now, we actually have some there this evening, testing some lights. And they will be complete tomorrow, with the exception of the bridges. We tend to wait till the very last minute to do that. They tend to attract a lot of foot traffic, getting kicked. So, we try to put those up last, try to make them last a little longer than they typically would if we got them out right now. Only other thing I got is next month, I will have the completion paperwork for the 2024 L-MIG and as well as the proposed 2025 L-MIG project list. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Are there any questions for Mr. Still? Hearing none, Mr. McGuire, Telecom?
Thank you, Mayor. As business as usual for Telecom, we're rolling around. We had a really good, really good month in terms of fiber installations. Usually, we eke about a percent up on fiber and a percent down on cable. Modems there, but we, we actually had a 3% swing. So, we're getting really close to that 60-40 threshold now. So, we hit 50-50 not long ago, but we're getting even closer every day of going in the right direction there. So, the infrastructure, as I've always been saying for a couple of months now, as we're getting close to being done in Monroe, if you'll notice on your report, we usually turn up anywhere from about, anywhere from 10 to 20 streets usually on a month for new fiber service installation and activations. And it's a little thin this month, mostly because most of our contractors got pulled off to go help to, help restore areas that were hit by Hurricane Helene and Milton that had come through. So, we were kind of without them for a couple of weeks. The good news is, is we, we got so much splicing to do and so many installs to do from everything that has been turned up to this point. That's, even with them gone, we still had a really, really good month in terms of conversions and installations. So, that's really good. We're working down our, on the Walton Road side, heading towards, out towards Gratus Road, catching a couple of subdivisions where we have some plant there. Going to be converting those. And then we're also going to be heading down Highway 11 towards to catch a couple of, few remaining pockets that are kind of left. And at that point, we'll, we'll be finished outside of just one or two small clusters that we've got to work with some property owners on, like the Housing Authority, to get those taken care of. So, it's, it's coming along and coming near completion here very soon. The apartment complex over, off of Acock Avenue, I think they call it the Jax now, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, is the name of it. We just set the infrastructure. The outside's ready to go. It's live, it's turned on. Obviously, we're still working for the interior portion. Obviously, we're still working for the interior portion, but my understanding is we will be the only provider inside of that facility. So we'll be able to service phone and data services for all those residents inside of those apartment complexes. And our goal there is to have that to where, when a customer moves in, we can make that process as seamless as possible for them. So our construction and engineering teams have already been working on that and got a plan in place and it's, it's coming along pretty good. And the last thing I want to end on, on is more of a personal note here is, is remember Perry Darley in y'all's prayers. Perry's been with us for about 23 years here at the city and had to go and have some major surgery a couple of weeks ago, kind of quickly and unexpectedly. Came through that great, he was doing really good, but last word I got is there's some complications have arisen from the surgery itself. Nothing really life-threatening, but he's having a rough ride right now. So if y'all would just remember Perry in y'all's prayers, I would really appreciate that. So he's going to be out of pocket for a little bit, so.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us know. Are there any questions for Mr. McGuire? Thank you, Mike. Moving to Mr. Middlebrooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Start off with the gas grant that we just received. It was the 2024 Natural Gas Distribution Infrastructure Safety and Modernization Grant. It was for 1.9 million, a little over 1.9 now. 0% match. This is to replace all the steel mains. It would be the, basically if you took Broad Street, Spring Street, it'd be everything in that, that direction. It's four, 4.3 miles of gas mains that are replaced. And the other two sections that we put in, we put in three total and they, all three came back as highly recommended. Only reason we didn't get the funding for the other two was they ran out of money. So we were encouraged to reapply in '25 for those two. So looking forward to that. The 22 CDVG, everything's paved now, but the contractor has a very long punch list. So you may see them around for at least another month or two, but just wanted to give you an update on it. And I mentioned the other day too, the letters went out for the lead and copper. Last sheet has a place here that anybody that was not, if you received a letter, then we have not eliminated your service. So you can help us eliminate your side by just completing this little section here and taking the picture of your pipe, whether it's under the house, whether it's in the, where your, where your hot water heater is, something like that will suffice for that and we can eliminate your service. Roughly about 3,700 total left to do there. And then we are, overhead crew is finishing up our last eight switches. We'll have all our switches installed, got a contractor helping them. So we should have those finished another week or two. We'll get somebody in here to program them. So we'll be done with all the switching part and then we're finishing up our next grid grant with Jifa. It's a, it'll replace 161 poles, 88 transformers, roughly four and a half miles of overhead with about a $2 million budget. So hopefully we'll do good in that one as well. We'll see. That's all I've got, unless you've got any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Middlebrooks. Any que, any questions?
Coming back to you, Rodney, for Department Request Bid Award for $500,000, or 500,000 gallon elevated water tank.
Okay, let me get to it here.
$500,000 would be nice.
So we're requesting your approval. This is the last of the bond projects for utilities. This is the half a million gallon elevated tank that'll go at Cherry Hill Road. This is for, this will provide the extra volume and pressures that we need for the industrial part. The low bid was, actually the only bid, was Caldwell Tanks in the amount of $3,436,442. If you've got any questions, I'll try to answer those.
Anyone have any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to public hearings, zoning ordinance amendment, Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. I will try to go through these as painlessly as I can. There's quite a bit. These are your proposed amendments that include your Form Based Code and then there are some that were attaching to your current zoning ordinance. So I'm just going to jump right into them, starting with the parking requirements in Section 520. I don't know if many of you will recall, but there was a study done for the city last year regarding our parking by Eric Kronberg in Atlanta. So we're proposing amendments that coincide with the recommended changes to the city. Starting off, we're going to reduce the parking sizes from being nine by 20 down to eight by 18. And we're going to allow for compact parking within the city that can count towards your maximum parking requirement. We're going to increase the distance allowed for off-street parking to a site. These are all parking-friendly requirements as opposed to more restrictive. That includes things like the change of use. We're going to allow that to, to occur on a property and not be intrusive with our zoning ordinance to allow them to have some parking on the site that will meet our code, but we're not going to put the full force of the code on a, a change of use property. And then other shared parking arrangements will be 100% as opposed to the one we have now, which is pretty limited. Got some weird diagrams in our ordinance. We're going to get rid of those, put some more friendlier ones in here. I'm not going to read the specifics on each one of these, but this is a better way to convey what our parking requirements are when you start changing the angle of parking. And this includes the compact spaces as well as the new space dimensions that we're proposing. Moving along, we're going to change some of our parking minimum requirements, just to be easier, to be a little bit clearer to the public of what we're asking for. For example, multifamily is just one and a half per unit. We're going to change that to be one space for a one and two bedroom unit and then one and a half for the three bedroom and larger units. It will reduce some parking required for a multifamily site. For the commercial, we're just going to keep it simple, three per 1,000. This coincides with your Form Based Code that I'll discuss in a minute. Same thing with other non-residential uses. We're just going to keep the parking requirements clean and kind of clear and easy to calculate for both the public and the staff and these coincide with your Form Based Code. So we'll have a seamless parking requirement across the board when we, when we have the Form Based Code. Back to that slide there, we're adding some terminology in our variance section because right now you require variance. If anyone wants to exceed your parking requirement, it will be a special exception variance instead of just a variance. Moving along, we're going to change our loading dimensions. We're going to reduce the size of those. It's pretty hefty right now, 55 feet. We can reduce that to 35 to allow for smaller trucks as the minimum required by the city as opposed to a, one that would accommodate a tractor trailer. And also inside our CBD, we're going to allow provision for there to be off-street loading that can occur on the street itself. Instead of requiring someone to have that, we don't have that provision right now. It actually requires someone to have loading spaces on their site. Moving along, in Section 610, 620, 630, we're getting rid of the tables. There are three individual land use tables here that are all different. They all have the same land uses in them for the most part, but we're going to get rid of all three of those and consolidate them into one land use table. And so that'll be the introduction of a new section here. It's called Section 635, Principal and Accessory Land Use Table. It will be the only land use table in the code outside of the Form Based Code. And so here we've got the provisions that basically set it up. It's the same paragraph and the same language from the previous deleted sections that describe what the table's trying to convey to the public. And in this case, we're adding some language here that gives the, some degree of interpretation because we have no provision now that lets us use appropriate resources for planning and the NASSES whenever there's some type of gray area issue that occurs. So just jumping right into the land use table, it's a little cleaner than what you have now. It's all of the land, zoning districts on one table. And the only changes that we're proposing, I've highlighted in yellow. In this case, this page, it shows household pets. We don't allow them in some certain households. So we're going to make those permitted by right across the board. Moving along, animal facilities like shelters and kennels, they're currently permitted by right in B3. We're recommending to the council that change to be conditional so that the council has an opportunity to see a dog kennel if it comes before us. There are no land area size restrictions or anything related to dog kennels. This may be something that council would have an interest in if this comes up again in the city. Moving along, childcare centers, we're going to make those allowed across the board and conditional to B1. They're currently not allowed in B1. I don't know why. I don't see an issue with that land use being included as a conditional use. And moving on to like healthcare and facilities, you can see at the bottom of the screen, we're dealing with hospitals. They're currently permitted by right in B, B1 and B3, or B2 and B3. Bit unusual there. I think the city council would have an interest in any type of facilities that would be designated as a hospital or a laboratory. Those would need to come before you guys, in my opinion. So we're recommending those be changed to conditional. Same thing with sanitariums and mental institutions. We're recommending that not be permitted by right in B3 and it be made conditional. There's a lot of highlighting you can see at the bottom of the screen. There's some changes we're recommending to anything related to the motor vehicle realm. This includes body repair, car washes, fuel cells, gas stations, truck stops, you name it. Everything except parts and accessories, we're asking that they all be changed from by right to conditional use so that this council can review those items when they come up instead of having by right situations for those types of land uses. Same thing with the heavy side of that, the, the heavy motor vehicle, which is your RVs, heavy trucks, tractor trailers. We're just recommending where they are permitted by right now, they just be changed to conditional. We're not eliminating them from the city. We're just asking that they be something that the city council has an opportunity to review. Moving on, we're getting rid of campgrounds. I don't know why we allow them in mobile home parks and BR2, but those, that land use does not fit. You don't have no campgrounds in the city currently. The recommendation is to remove it. I'm not sure why historic sites are listed as a land use and they're all conditional inside just residential. That's something that's regulated by your Historic Preservation Commission. It's not a land use that you have to have in your ordinance. So recommendation is just to remove it. Same thing with museums, I say just remove the conditional use opportunity for those from residential districts. Let's see, the fuel cells issue again coming up as conditional as permitted by right. And then I don't know what a station or terminal is in transportation. I've tried to look it up. I don't know what it is, but not saying get rid of it, but let's make it conditional so you guys can see it if it ever does come up. And that pretty much takes care of the big changes for your primary principal land use code. The accessory table now is going to be a new separate table that deals just with your accessory uses. No big changes here. We're just cleaning up some of the language. You see a lot of the blue on the pages, just cleaning that up. And then we're going to allow permitted by right where you allow residences in the city. Someone could have a home office or a home resident, residential business. This pretty much takes care of the land use table issues. Those are some of the biggest changes we're proposing. So in those three tables that you have currently, there's notations at each one of the tables. This is the third table for your M1 zoning district. We're recommending, there's language at the end of this, you can see it marked out in red, that deals with your M1 zone properties in downtown. The Form Based Code that you will consider shortly will offset the need for this, this language here to exist anymore in your ordinance. So the recommendation here is just to remove it. The Form Based Code, your current CBD and the envelope of a district address this entirely. Moving on, this is related to your current CDO. We're asking that signs be allowed as administrative instead of someone having to produce a sign and take 60 days to get in front of your planning commission to get an approval. And we're asking to increase the site changes from $5,000 to $25,000 for minor changes on the site. They can be approved at the administrative level up to that limit. Otherwise, it would have to go in front of your planning commission for a change. This is the Kronberg Parking Study Change for your MHDO. It's just tweaking the parking requirement for senior housing and for dwelling units inside the MHDO. We're reducing the requirement, basically making it more parking friendly. This is your CBD land use tables, getting eliminated for that other land, the other table we just, just discussed. Same thing with your CBD, we're changing signs to be an administrative and increasing the amount to 25,000 for building and site changes. And this is dealing with your planned districts. We're trying to clarify the requirements for submittal. There's been confusion in the past when I'm dealing with applicants and some of the planned districts you've seen, it's not quite clear. We've just been lucky with some really good submittals lately. So we're going to enhance the language here to match basically what the council's been seeing lately. That's identifying the actual pattern book language and increasing the standards. We're actually, actually asking someone to provide more detailed plans like you've been seeing and making that a standard for a planned district submittal. We're getting rid of the requirement you see in red to go in front of your CDO or HPC before they go to council because your planned districts allow for them to deviate from some of those standards except, excuse me, for the CDO and the CBD, not HPC. They can deviate from some of those standards in their planned district. This page here deals with the, again, with the planned districts. We're making the, the requirement to submit a development agreement an option as opposed to a requirement. None of the planned districts that have been presented before you since I've been here have been, had a completed development agreement in hand. So we're making it an option. If someone wants to come to us, they can with a development agreement, but this gives someone the ability to basically submit a reason without that document being in place. And the language here proposed requires it be a condition upon zoning approval. So we will get a development agreement in place. It just doesn't have to occur at the time of zoning. All right, Form Based Code, I'm going to try to be as brief with this as possible. Hopefully you guys are as familiar with this as I am. So this is dealing with a new article in your ordinance. We're going to insert it as Article 7 and shift articles back to add one more article into your code. There's basically, I'm not going to get into the meat and potatoes of this. I don't want to bore you guys to death completely, but there's five main sections in this. And basically as, just as Brian Wright has described, if you've listened to him talk, this is just a different way of doing the same thing we're doing already in our zoning ordinance. This is just a different set of standards that complement basically most of what we already have. It just goes one step further, further and deals with the actual form of houses and buildings that will be built. It basically creates a more predictable environment as opposed to what zoning can't. And so there are five main sections. The first section is the general section, deals with the regulation of it, deals with the, the regulation map, plan amendments, which I can discuss here in a moment. Section 710 deals with the actual character districts themselves and one special district that will have. Section 720 is standards and requirements, not too dissimilar from your current zoning ordinance. I'm not going to read each one of these, but it's quite detailed. And Section 720 really gets into the meat and potatoes of things like parking that you already deal with, the encroachments and uses and things like that, that you're already regulating inside your zoning ordinance itself. It goes a bit further though. There's a lot more detail in the Form Based Code. I'm not going to go through each one of these specifically. There's only 200 pages of it. And then the last two sections are the sign standards, which are different than our current sign ordinance now. They're better, as my, in my opinion, they're a lot easier to understand. It will be better for the public. Any other properties regulated under this code will be far easier to deal with from a sign perspective and they'll be nicer, more enhanced signs on certain buildings and properties. And then the last section is a definition section that deals with definitions, definitions that you don't currently have in your zoning ordinance that are in the Form Based Code. They're basically supplementing what we don't have in our ordinance. So there's clarity across the board and no confusion between the two, the zoning ordinance and the Form Based Code. In Section 710, it talks about the character districts and hopefully you're familiar enough with these, but there are five total districts. The CD3, which is the small neighborhood, CD4 Neighborhood Center, CD5, which is Urban Center, the special district, which are your two major mill areas, and then basically your public properties, the civic district. Those are shown on the regulating plan that is required to adopt along with the, the Form Based Code itself. The properties that are shown on here in the various colors on the screen are identified with their different districts. I'm not going to go through each one, but as you can tell in the center of the city, currently where your CBD is now, that's your more intense CD5 district, right? That's your urban center. And as you move away from that, you see the darker maroon sort of color is your Neighborhood Center, your CD4s. Those are occurring more in your, near your nodes and some existing commercial properties. There'll be some opportunities there for redevelopment potentially in the future. And then the CD3 kind of matches your R1, R1A zoning now, except it has some smaller standards in it that will also continue to permit housing in the district. And then I'm going to point to the screen. I know that the folks watching this on TV can't see this, but there are existing planned districts that are a part of some of these properties. That planned district can be preserved under this Form Based Code. We added that in in our last change with the TPUDC team and myself because we didn't want to hinder those planned district properties from moving forward with what they've already been considered by with the city council. So if they don't change anything, they can develop their property as they're, they're currently planned. But if they make changes, they'll have to comply with the Form Based Code. But if they make changes, they'll have to comply with the Form Based Code. Just to give you some idea, if you haven't already, the details that are inside, like this is just CD3, the details are pretty specific for each lot, what's going to be required and how the lots should look. Each little specific element that goes into a property is identified inside the Form Based Code, I'm not going to read each one of these, just to give you some idea, but it's quite detailed. A lot of it is really just a common sense approach to development and home placement on a property. The standards and requirements also include some pretty good graphical illustrations, it's going to be easy for the public to kind of digest what we're asking for on these properties when they come to us and try to develop a home on a property. It should be pretty clear for the staff and for the public to understand what the requirements are we're trying to achieve. The Form Based Code does include a variety of building types, most of which you already permit in your city. These are not, these are not new things that we're proposing, especially with our CBD. Pretty much every one of these buildings you see in this list, which looks like a lot, they're currently already allowed in your central business district. And we allowed them most recently in the planned district rezone for the Breedlove Farm. Almost all these building types were included in that, because it does provide a mix and variety within the city. Each one of these building types is identified specifically in the category where they're going to be allowed, and so we're not just, you know, spraying them across the board in a weird, random fashion. They are specific to the types of buildings that can be allowed to each specific district. One thing that we don't have in our ordinance now is a thoroughfare type, which gets really into the specifics of what thoroughfares are supposed to look like and the types of plantings we're going to allow, the dimensions that are required. It's a pretty, it's a pretty good item to have inside the Form Based Code, because if you're going to set up the lot itself, you want the outdoor environment that's accompanying it, the street, basically to have the right elements with it, so they both complement each other. The next to last section are the sign standards, I'm not going to get into the specifics of these, there's a lot. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at those, and that pretty much takes care of a really broad stroke sort of look at your Form Based Code for Article VII. And as I mentioned a minute ago, we're going to be changing all the numbering after Article VII, so everything gets shifted back into a new numbering system for those. Basically, we're not changing the ordinances themselves, or, excuse me, the articles past that except for the numbering. And then these amendments here that I'm about to describe. So in Section 1285, we are asking to remove the sign variance requirement, because you already have a variance standard requirement in Article, currently in Article 14. There's a conflict with this particular set of standards and the one that's in Article 14, so the recommendation is to remove it. Now, moving on to the variance section, we are adding some language in the variance section that deals with the city council or the planning director. I will go into more detail about that in just one second, so we're adding some language here about planning, zoning director having some authority, and then the types of variances that we're going to be having. We're increasing the language for variance applications themselves, kind of clarifying some language there. But we're getting rid of the actual first section that deals with the variance application decision, because we're adding a new section that deals with different types of variances. Right now you have one, blanket, that just deals with certain variance standards. We're proposing to add two. One will be a special exception and one will be a hardship. And under special exceptions, there will be the opportunity for administrative special exceptions. Special exception variances only deal with five things: setbacks, building height, automobile parking requirements, screening, buffering, and landscaping, and lot coverage. Real simple, real basic stuff, these are things that are not typically hardships. They're just things that someone could ask for a variance on. We're adding standards for those, and then under the administrative part of that, for the planning and zoning director, would be two items that they could actually grant an administrative special exception variance to, building heights and building setbacks only at a 20% of the actual standard. That'll be the only authority the planning and zoning director has, because there are plenty instances and that city council may not want to see a half a foot or a foot setback variance when it could be granted administratively. That's just a common sense approach to variances, in my opinion, so hopefully this will help out some folks in the community that run into a couple of issues where a 60-day process isn't really going to help them at all. And then, the hardship variance. This is basically your current variance standards now, we're just calling it hardship variances that requires the applicant to prove an actual hardship. It includes the standards that you currently have in place now, I think we've enhanced a few of those. And then there are the two maps. Your zoning map that accompanies these amendments is also being proposed, and then there's the regulating plan. And that's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
That's it. Are there any questions for Mr. Calendar?
I do have one comment.
Yes, sir.
And I'm concerned about the width of the parking spaces, gone down from nine to eight, eight feet. I mean, some people still drive big vehicles.
They do. The eight will be the minimum required. If you want to paint bigger stripes, we won't stop that.
But, you know, we know how people park and people have a lot of damage to vehicles, that's just my concern. I see it every day.
I understand. I'd like to comment further, though, the pavilion, they were eight by 18s. I'm not sure if that was intended to be that case originally, but those were eight by 18s. I was actually surprised to read that the first time I saw their actual parking requirements, they were smaller than ours. If we run into conflicts with our nine by 20 and their eight by 18 now...
Okay, I just want to put that out there, because I made a vote on that one little section right there, but the rest of it's great.
Are there any, would there be any areas that we say absolutely not, they need to be bigger, or is that just specifically blanket, eight by 18?
Eight by 18 is just like your current ordinance now, it's a blanket, it's a minimum. It doesn't mean that they have to be painted that way, but I also don't expect to, Mr. Thompson's point, that it designate big vehicle spaces either, so it's something that the council would definitely want to consider if you want to reduce those down.
Okay.
It's the recommendation here at Kronberg, our Form Based Code has eight by 18s. Pretty much the industry standard is eight by 18. Nine by 20 is a big space.
Were we to go through and approve this, could we maybe make that caveat that we would want the minimum? What's the problem with saying the minimum? The minimum being eight by 18, I don't have an issue with, but maybe eight by 18, but we encourage nine-foot width, you know? Would that be acceptable? Lawyer?
I just don't see any need to do that. Why do that?
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Now, I do want you to know that we have been dealing with Brian Wright and TPUDC for a year, right?
It's not long.
This time, right? And we've been going over this and over this and over this. So, the lack of questions from this council doesn't mean that they have no questions, means they have no questions tonight, because they were very thorough in answering and putting on the charrettes and taking input from the people in the general public. So, kind of a quiet group tonight, but that's why, they pretty much answered all of our questions up front. So no more questions. Okay, do I have anyone in the audience that would like to speak? I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the zoning text amendment, zoning ordinance text amendments? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against any of the amendments that were just described? Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we'll be back to revisit that in just a minute. Moving to ordinance to amend Chapter 90, Taxation, Article VI, Occupation Taxes. Mr. Probst?
Thank you, Mayor. In brief, we are revisiting the occupational tax, AKA business license. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we changed how we did the practice to a gross receipts method, and as such, there's a few tweaks that we wanted to do along the way. And I'll let Paul head into those as we talk about the first reading. But, in short, it's really focusing on creating some more fairness and equity in our downtown district, cleaning up some things to, for legal compliance, just in a couple of different categories, and breaking out a couple other categories for easier administration here in the office, as well as raising the total cap for the occupational tax. I'll let Paul handle any other particular details on the first reading here.
.........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Thank you, Mr. Probst. Are there any questions for either? Hearing none, I will open this meeting for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the ordinance to amend Chapter 90, Taxation, Article VI, Occupation Taxes? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against? Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we will be back to revisit that in just a few minutes. Moving to new business, the City Hall chiller replacement, Mr. Crowe?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, we're just asking for your approval of the replacement of one of the chillers, one of the three chillers that works here at the City Hall facility. It's a 45-ton chiller in the amount of $158,247, and that service would be provided by Mallory and Evans, who is our current service contract, they hold our current service contract. This was something that we spoke about last week, and I'll just have it before you for approval.
Thank you, Chris. So are there any questions for Mr. Crowe? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Thompson and a second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries, that passes unanimously. The second reading ordinance to amend Chapter VI, Alcoholic Beverages, Mr. Probst?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, we're bringing this back up. We've passed it before, but we're going to pass it again, and we did it last month as the first reading, and I'll turn it over to Paul for the official second reading, so it's on the record.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be the second reading of this ordinance, you considered the first reading last month at your October 8, 2024 regular meeting. This will be the second reading of this ordinance. This is an ordinance to amend Chapter VI, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of the Ordinances of the City of Monroe, Georgia regarding the permitted sale and use of alcohol inside the city limits. The mayor and the council of City Monroe hereby ordain as follows. Article I, the Code of Ordinances of the City Monroe is hereby amended by implementing the below text amendments related to the noted sections of Chapter VI, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of Ordinances as follows. See Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated here and by reference for the complete text amendment. Please note the text which is stricken will be removed from the Code of Ordinances of the City Monroe, text which is underlined will be added to the Code of Ordinances of the City Monroe. Exhibit A reads as follows. Chapter VI, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 6-84, Hours and Days of Sale. Sub A, distilled spirits shall not be sold for consumption on the premises except between the hours of 9:00 a.m. until 12:00 a.m., Monday through Saturday. Sub B, distilled spirits shall not be sold for consumption at any time in violation of state law or any local ordinance or regulation or of any special order of the mayor and city council. Sub C, the sale of distilled spirits for consumption on the premises is permitted on Sundays from 11:00 a.m. until 12:00 midnight, provided a Sunday sales license has been obtained. Sub D, distilled spirits may be sold for consumption on the premises from 12:00 midnight to 1:30 a.m. on January 1, New Year's Day of any year. Sub E, a new added subsection, licensees holding a retail consumption dealer license under Article II of this chapter shall not permit patrons to remain on their premises after 1:00 a.m., Monday through Sunday, except on January 1, New Year's Day of any year. The licensee may permit patrons to remain on their premises until 2:00 a.m. Section VI, 108, Hours and Days of Sale. Sub A, beer or wine shall not be sold for consumption on the premises except between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 12:00 a.m., Monday through Saturday. Sub B, no beer or wine shall be sold for consumption at any time in violation of state law or any local ordinance or regulation or of any special order of the mayor and city council. Sub C, the sale of beer or wine on the premises is permitted on Sundays from 11:00 a.m. until 12:00 midnight, provided a Sunday sales license has been obtained. Sub D, beer and/or wine may be sold for consumption on the premises from 12:00 midnight to 1:30 a.m. on January 1, New Year's Day of any year. Sub E, which is a new section, licensees holding a retail consumption dealer license under Article III of this chapter shall not permit patrons to remain on the premises after 1:00 a.m., Monday through Sunday, except on January 1, New Year's Day of any year, the licensee may permit patrons to remain on their premises until 2:00 a.m. Section VI, 335, Hours and Days of Sale. Sub A, no alcoholic beverages shall be sold for consumption on the premises of private clubs except between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 12:00 a.m., Monday through Saturday. Sub B, alcoholic beverages shall not be sold for consumption at any time in violation of any state law or local ordinance or regulation or of any special order of the mayor and city council. Sub C, the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises is permitted on Sundays from 12:30 p.m. until 12:00 midnight in a private club or sports club, provided a Sunday sales license has been obtained. Article II, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Article III, this ordinance shall take effect from and after its adoption by the mayor and council of the City of Monroe, Georgia. This constitutes the second reading this 12th day of November, 2024, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. I appreciate that, and I appreciate you doing it all in one breath, that was pretty impressive. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
A motion by Mr. Dickinson to approve, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Sambs. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thanks again, Paul. I move to the second reading of the GMEBS Restated Defined Benefit Retirement Plan Ordnance Amendment, Mr. Probst?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, we've discussed this in the past, this is just in compliance with GMEBS, our city retirement benefit plan manager, to comply with the IRS rules, which have changed, and this will go into effect January 1, 2025. I'll not be as eloquent as Paul, but in Section 1, it's just a plan document. Exhibit A is a complete agreement with GMEBS, basic plan document. Section 2 is the adoption agreement, which is further down below. Section 3, the effective date, again, January 1, 2025. Section 4, all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are expressly repealed, and this will be the second reading, this 12th day of November, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. Are there any questions for Logan or Paul? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Malcolm, is there a second? Second by Ms. Crawford, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, everybody. Moving to the zoning ordinance amendment. Mr. Calendar, the one you just discussed, is there anything you'd like to talk about?
Well, I think I covered everything in...
I think you did, and I appreciate it.
......
Does the council wish to have the ordinance read? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion, please. please. A motion to approve by Ms. Sams.
Hang tight. This is gonna be first reading.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is gonna be first reading. Let's just let this come back before next month as second reading.
Okay, I can do it.
Thanks for the enthusiasm. Appreciate it.
We were almost there. Okay, moving to ordinance to amend Chapter 90 Taxation Article Six Occupation Taxes that Logan discussed. Are there any questions for Logan or Paul? Was this the first reading or a second? Okay. We'll discuss that again next month. Moving to approval for beer and wine consumption on premise for Moringa, the Thai restaurant at one-thirty South Broad Street. Very, very good restaurant. I need a motion to approve beer and wine consumption on premises for one-thirty South Broad.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Sams. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to the approval for beer and wine, distilled spirit consumption on premises for Taiwan on at one-two-nine North Wayne Street. I need a motion to approve beer and wine, distilled spirits consumption on premise for one-twenty-nine Wayne Street, please.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Dickinson. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, when is that supposed to be open?
March, December first. That's exciting. It really looks great. I know you've been putting a lot of work in. Thank you all, and congratulations for what you're about to hear here. I have a motion and a second. Is all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Piece of cake. I'm moving to approval for the brewery for Alexer Brew Company at one-two-three North Lumpkin Street. I need a motion to approve the brewery for one-twenty-three North Lumpkin Street.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Dickinson and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion?
Where is this located?
In the former Southern Brewing location.
That's big news. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Thank you, everybody. Moving to district items. Ms. Malcolm?
I don't have anything. I encourage everybody to take advantage of the light of the night and the Christmas activities they're about to onboard.
Ms. Crawford?
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Boyce?
Sure.
Glad you're here, ma'am. I know you rush. Ms. Sams?
Yes, this Sunday, out at Southern Ochs, we are having a chili cook-off to raise some more money for Shop With A Cop. Tickets are fifteen dollars for adults, ten dollars for kids. I hope y'all will come out and try the chili and help us raise some money.
Thank you, ma'am. And Ms. Brown? I'm gonna take Tyler's spot right here and ask that you pray for his father, who's having some health issues, which is why he's unable to be here. I won't go into him, but let's just keep Tyler and his family in your prayers, please. Mr. Thompson?
There's a lot of excitement about the downtown and how beautiful it looks during Christmas time, so I just wanna thank everybody. Our district really appreciates it. It brings a lot of folks into town, so you guys, especially over there and over here, y'all just, y'all keep up what you're doing, because it's, we're the talking state.
Love it. Mr. Dickinson?
Nothing farther.
All right, I have a couple of things. Who's playing Thursday? Remedy Tree?
That's Friday. Thursday's the candlelight classic.
Okay. Candlelight Classic Thursday. I'm sure we're getting into individual businesses, but, you know. Let's all pray for David, too. If you hit your knees tonight, I'd appreciate it. He's gonna come back with a new heart tomorrow.
Well, not exactly. Hopefully, I'm just gonna come back, you know? Although, there might be those who say, maybe not, so...
And please, again, keep Mr. Darlin' in your prayers as well. Logan and I were at the mayor's summit at Chateau Lane over the weekend for MEAG, and it's interesting the way they do that. When we go to the one in the spring, they talk about what's happened in the past year, kind of what we expect federally, and they do a little bit of that in the fall as well, but then, they go into ways that we can create value for our citizens and our communities. So, you'll be hearing more of that in the coming months, but they have some really exciting stuff that they have planned. And I have chili cook-off to mention, so that's Saturday, and then, I think that is all. We do have to go to executive session for real estate. We don't have personnel set for tonight.
Could be legal tonight.
Legal tonight? I'm sorry. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session, please.
Move.
Motion by Ms. Malcolm and a second by Mr. Thompson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Thank you.